To order. If you would join me in... Would you have allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, perfect and just as for all. Thank you. I understand we have one new member tonight. I don't know if she's with us or not, but I think Cadillac in Precinct 6, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Hi, everybody.
All right, Amy has some words of wisdom for us that hopefully will help us get through this this meeting in one piece.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just a couple of points I want to make you aware of or remind you of as we move forward. First off, you see a count there in terms of the number of participants on your screen if you have your participants panel up. Just so you know, 26 of those use of those people logged in or users are what we're going to call non-voting. They are either the designation computers in the breakout rooms, or they are department heads, or board members, town administrator, all of those. So there will be 26 people when we do take a poll that will not show up as voting, just so you know that. That number is going to change too as maybe board members log off, but I will keep track of that. First other thing is that with the change that's in WebEx, you're all muted. And what will happen is when, if you electronically raise your hand and Mr. Byer, the moderator, calls on you, we will unmute you here. You'll get a notification that says requesting you to be unmuted. And you need to click on that to unmute yourself. And then you can go ahead and speak. And then we will... If you can remember to mute yourself when you get done asking your question, or we will mute you here, that's just going to kind of be the flow. That will give you a little bit of a time to pause, to remember. And then when you unmute yourself, you'll be talk... you can talk, okay? That make it run a little bit smoother. The second thing is in regards to the polling. There was confusion last time about the polling. What will happen is when we do a polling question, you will see a box come up on your screen requesting that you, if you want to participate in the poll. You need to click on that box to say, yes, I want to participate. Then the poll will come up. We will be running the polls for 30 seconds because we've tested it out and that's what most people can pretty much quickly decide on. And when you do that, there's a button to accept it. But then you will get another box, dialogue box up that says to submit your vote. So you need to make sure that you click on that submit to actually have your vote. So those are the kind of the three boxes that you go through, the three steps that you'll go through on the polling. And that I know was just a confusion area in September. We've kind of got it worked out now a little bit better. Any other... if there are any questions, Mr. Moderator? I don't know. Thank you.
No questions for Amy? Okay. We have, just so you know, we have three other, three rooms here set up. And when we, when we vote, I'll be calling those rooms and asking them to to give us their vote for, to give me the vote for the particular article. And I'll be adding the votes from, that are ended up in the tally to the ones from the three breakout rooms. And Roger is in one. Okay. So let's go through our opening motions. The moderator would entertain a motion that allow us to conduct this town meeting virtually. Somebody?
So moved. Roger Ives.
Thank you, Roger. Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, now, yeah, we'll get, we'll practice voting now. So all those in favor, raise... Vote.
And there are a lot of people that don't know where it is.
Amy, did you send out a question to vote on for this one? Question isn't out yet, that's why you can't see it. Handroom, do we have a vote?
Five in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Six in favor.
Thank you. Your poll, the poll question is on its way out. The next question, deputy moderator. Bruce Maury, and then the other two. There being 88 in favor and three opposed, motion carries. Moderator would entertain a motion naming the deputy moderators this evening, should we, Bruce Maury, Dan Duttucci, and Roger Bell.
So moved. Roger Ives.
Second?
Second.
There you go. All in favor?
Right.
Poll's on its way out. Hold on. Handroom, do I have a vote?
Or in favor?
Chorus room?
Six zero.
Thank you. There being 79 in favor, one opposed, that motion carries. And last procedural motion, should we not finish our business tonight? Need a motion to adjourn until 7:30 on Wednesday, January 27.
So moved. Roger.
Thank you. Second?
Second. Bill Boyden.
All right, polls coming out. All those in favor? All right. Handroom, do I have a vote?
Five zero.
Chorus room?
Six zero.
There being 84 in favor and three opposed, that motion carries. Okay, we're going to Article One, Reports of Town Officers and Committees. I believe we have a very quick report coming from the Transportation Committee. Dave Van Camp, you're on deck.
Hello, I think we have some slides that we were going to put up. We have those? Okay. Hello, hello everyone. I'm Dave Van Camp from Precinct 7 and a member of the Burlington Town Meeting Transportation Committee. And you might be asking, what transportation committee? We were formed in response to a warrant article approved in January last year. We've been meeting since June. Our goal is to better understand transportation issues facing Burlington and to help this body make better decisions regarding those issues. Because transportation seems to touch every decision we make in one way or the other. So we'd like to have a clear understanding of what's, what we're facing. You'll notice some familiar names on the, on the committee. I would like to give a shout out to Jen Jalinas, our admin. She hosts our meeting and keeps us productive. We appreciate that. And also John Strauss, a Burlington resident who gives us a good perspective as a consumer of transportation services here in Burlington. So we appreciate his help as well. Next slide, please. So a quick snapshot of where we think we stand today. There have been a lot of studies done over the years, but not a lot of action and not a lot of clear focus. And we need, the clock is ticking for us of that because the last transportation service over which Burlington has some direct control, the Lifts, Rideshare Program is set to expire at the end of June. So we've got some decisions to make as a body and as a town. And we face a number of challenges along the way. Not the least of which, we don't really have a clear understanding of what the Burlington actually is. And COVID-19 is not making our job any easier. In addition, unlike other towns where we have a clear local focus and town center, points of interest in Burlington are scattered in many cases by miles. And that just complicates transportation, transportation issues here in the town. We don't really see a dedicated focal point, a lot of split responsibilities. And money's tight. Now, these are just challenges that we face and we're going to have to work through them. Next slide, please. But we will deliver a final report to this body for the May town meeting. And we'll wrap it all up. And then we're done. This is an ad hoc committee, not a standing committee. So between now and May, we plan to publish a web questionnaire to solicit some public input. We will continue to talk to town administrators and town officials to get their perspectives, as well as talking to regional transportation advocates and other transportation systems to get their input and perspective. But don't wait for us. There's a decision we have to make about the Rideshare Program. And it is the opinion of this committee that the town should do everything in its power to keep that program running through fiscal year 2022, which starts in July. So if there's anything you take away from this brief presentation, take that as an action item. We need to keep that program running. So that's where we stand today. You can count on us coming back to you in May with a full report. And thank you very much. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Dave. Brings us to Article Two. An act relative to changing the name of the Board of Selectmen in the town of Burlington has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee and it is as printed in the warrant. Is there someone who was going to say something about this? Selectmen, town administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's Paul Sagarino, Town Administrator. I think we got, we sent out a memo as to what the purpose of these three articles are. There's no intention to change any of the duties or responsibilities of the board. It's strictly a name change to reflect a more modern and contemporary name that's in use in local government today. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions? I lost my list of people here. Okay, I don't see any hands raised.
Yeah.
Yeah. So... In that case, let's vote on this. All those in favor, all those opposed. There's a poll coming out and...
I did have a question and didn't get recognized.
I also had a question for the Transportation Committee and raised my hand.
Well, I apologize. I didn't see him go up. Thought they were supposed to show up at the top of my screen here. Yeah?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Bean, you have a question on this motion.
I had a question about the Transportation Committee, or the Transportation Committee.
Let's finish this article, please. I'll come back to you.
Sure.
Christine Warren. Question on this article.
I'm sorry. I did not mean to, Mr. Moderator. I was trying to get ready for the poll. I apologize.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator.
Oh, yeah, who's calling?
Roger Bell.
Mr. Bell.
Just a question on the, the name itself. In the backup, it says it's the Executive Board. Is, is that different from what's written in the warrant?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the email sent out clarified, there was some confusing backup put into the, into your warrant. So that is a suggestion from somebody else as to what the name should be. So we clarified that up with a subsequent memo. So it's Select Board, Select Board Member.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further questions on this article? Any non-part to a vote? Amy, if you could send out the poll? Deputy moderators, poll your rooms. Handroom, do I have a vote?
Five zero in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Zero.
All right, you're good now.
Six zero.
Thank you.
That way you don't have to keep on coming up here and you don't have to.
There being 84 in favor, six opposed, two extensions, the motion carries.
Is that okay?
All right, Mr. Bean, if you have a quick question. We're not going into details on, on transportation, on reports, but I'll allow a quick question.
Thank you. This is Andy Wells Bean, Precinct 3. I was wondering whether the Transportation Committee explored the Safe Routes to Schools program.
Hi, Andy. Great question. We've looked at a number of reports. I'm not sure if I've seen that particular report or program, but I can tell you that we spent a lot of time discussing getting kids, dealing with school children's transportation issues and getting kids back and forth to school safely, including after-school programs. So it's been top of mind for the committee. If you want to reach out to me separately and give me a pointer to that study, I'd be happy to bring it to the committee, to the committee. And you're welcome to join any of our meetings at any, at any point. They're public meetings. We'd love to hear from you.
Sounds good. And I'm especially interested because it's a funding program, not just a report.
Well, talk to us during the meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
We'd love to hear more.
Yeah, only that one change.
Okay, that brings us to Article Three, Zoning Bylaw Housekeeping Amendment. And as this one is not as depicted in the warrant, I'm going to have to read it. This move, this article has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws as follows. Correct spelling and formatting throughout zoning bylaws. Article Two, Definitions. Remove the third decimal point and alphabetize the article. Numbering is as follows. 2.1A, 2.2B, 2.3C, so on to 2.26Z. Article Three, Districts. Correct map references regarding the zoning map and reflect the digitized zoning and overlay maps previously adopted by town meeting. Article Four, Use Regulations. Correct formatting and references. Article Seven, General Regulations. Clarify non-structured stormwater and low-impact design. Article Eight, Overlay Districts. Update or eliminate in many outdated terms and references like MDC. Article Twelve, Plan Development Districts. Update to include electronic permitting similar to what we did in September. And Article Nine, Administration and Procedures. And further, town meeting permits for the, for the planning director in consultation with the town clerk to correct spelling and grammatical errors identified that do not have any effect on the substance or meaning of the zoning bylaws. Okay. Someone speaking on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Kristin Casner. I actually don't have a lot to add since you so eloquently read the whole article. It actually is very simple. Many of you have asked me in the past why certain words are spelled wrong in the zoning bylaw and we actually don't change things unless we come to you guys. So what this is really doing is, you know, the zoning bylaw has been in some form since 1977. We've reorganized a little bit, but overall it always needs a little housekeeping. I want to thank the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee for working so closely with me on this to really dot the i's, cross the t's, and do it a couple more times. So I thank them. It very much is a housekeeping amendment to neaten things up. And if anyone has any questions, we did have a backup of 143 pages of the actual changes that were made in the backup and it's on the website. And if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer them. And the Planning Board voted five zero in favor. Thank you.
Zoning Bylaw Review, did you take a stand on this?
This is Shari, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we did take a vote on that. We voted nine zero in favor. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions on this article? Mr. Eiler?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Eiler, Precinct 6. Apologize for not asking this before the meeting. I just noticed it. I'm looking at the markup online. And I'm just curious on page four dash nine for the distribution facilities. It looks like a bunch of no's were changed to special permit. Am I reading that properly or?
So in that particular section, it was what we presented to you in September was not changed properly in the zoning bylaw. And that was a change that reflects what you guys voted on in September.
Okay, so it's bringing up that for that. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any further questions? John, hold your hand. Thank you. Do we have a poll ready, Amy? All right, in that case, we'll vote on this article. Poll's coming out. And Deputy Moderators, count your rooms. No, I know it. That's why I said. The end room. Do I have a vote?
Five zero in favor.
Thank you. Corrus Room?
Six zero in favor.
Thank you. There being ninety-two in favor and one opposed. Motion carries. Article Four, Board of Health, Associate Director of Public Health. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. It is hereby requested that this article be moved as follows. See if the town will vote to transfer from free cash to Budget Line sixty Board of Health salaries, the sum of forty thousand dollars to fund wages for a newly created role for the Board of Health Department for the position of Associate Director of Public Health Physician. Dr. Weiner. You have a presentation for us on this.
I was told that our town clerk is going to present it by video. Amy?
On its way, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, go.
Hi, I'm Ed Weiner, and I'm Chairman of the Burlington Board of Health. And I'm here to talk to you about the Associate Director of Public Health Physician. I have in front of me Paul Revere because he, by legend, is the first public health official in Massachusetts. But that's not me. Here I am. And if you come to the Unit of Human Services Building, that's what I'll look like. We're in unprecedented times. The Board of Health is a key part of our new Burlington. We're the future of this town, and that future will in part depend upon the work of your Burlington Board of Health. We need an additional professional, and we need it now. We needed it prior to COVID-19, and we need it now. The Burlington Board of Health touches every member of this community, young or old, every day. And you know, you know that because you know what we do. Whether it be public health. We do the inspections for food, restaurants, mobile vehicles, hotels, department stores. We do rabies clinics. We handle emergencies, many fires, foodborne illnesses, water and sewer issues, and we help hearings and we do closures. We inspect things like swimming pools, tanning facilities. We do tobacco enforcement. Smoking in the workplace. We review the recreational camps in Burlington, and we handle so many housing and many other complaints, including things like beaver flights. We are an integral part of land use in Burlington Town Planning. We review all development and redevelopment in this town. We do things like drainage, environmental reviews, but also quality of life. We review all site plans, special permits, and in some cases, like subdivisions upheld by the Supreme Court of Massachusetts, we are the decision-making authority. You know about mosquito control, and we work so closely with the Planning Board, Conservation Commission, and Board of Appeals, and Selectmen, and now Town Meeting. But we also work very closely with our police department. We have agreements and work so close with our fire department, schools, school committee, and public works. Environmental engineering, well, that's part of the Board of Health, too. We monitor the historic remediations which continue within this town, or pollution that took place decades ago. We have to do that because we're seeing so much development and redevelopment in this town, and we have promised you a clean Burlington. We do that under the hazardous material bylaw. We inspect all industry in this community. We have a biotechnology regulation now. And we run not only household, but commercial town hazardous waste collections. And what about the public health nursing? Well, we do screening programs from blood pressure that you've all been to, to bladder cancer screenings for the fire department. We have influenza clinics. This year, we did one drive-through, and we do lots of inoculations. But one of the major roles we have is in communicable disease surveillance. Many of these diseases you may not have heard of. Many of you have. But we even do, to this day, have to work with tuberculosis surveillance. We do a public health fair, and when necessary, we do home visits. But one of the most important things we do now is we've become a key emergency training, planning, and response agency for this community. Not only public health emergencies, but fire and water, flooding. And to help us with that, we sponsor and direct our Burlington Medical, our Burlington Volunteer Reserve Corps. Two hundred and fifty members of our community, many of you are part of the Burlington Medical Reserve Corps. We train for epidemics. We trained for pandemics. We were ready. We do things like emergency shelter drills. We're training in mental health emergencies and psychiatric emergencies. We do leadership, radio communication, and everything involving what may happen and hopefully not happen to our town. And on top of all of our work, I don't have to describe the coronavirus. Controlling the disease in our community, we've been working for almost a year without a break, seven days a week, weekends, evening, holidays. Our Director of Public Health, Susan Luminallo, is a true town hero. She hasn't had a day off in months. Contact tracing, training, community education, the myriad of complaints that we get every day, and we are the agency of enforcement. We have helped to keep and helped for many of organizations to cope with this disease. We've kept our schools open, town government, restaurants, religious organizations, and we've worked with all the key businesses in Burlington. And we've talked to many, many people within this town. You know about the COVID immunization and vaccine program, vaccination program? Well, we're following the state, and we've already begun vaccinating our first responders, police, fire, those of you involved in dispensing the vaccine. And we're making plans for large community vaccine clinics. But then that brings us to the new issues within town. COVID. So many changes in industry, in commerce. We are in a new environment, the environment of biotechnology. This town is evolving from office space and retail to biotech and biotechnology laboratories. We are described as a town with platinum status, welcoming the biotechnology community. Our Board of Health, through its biotechnology regulation and hazardous materials bylaw, has already begun regulating the many companies that have come to this town. But biotechnology requires continuous research review, continuous permitting, individual community oversight, regular safety inspections. All that is necessary is done by your Board of Health. For example, Tuesday evening, this coming Tuesday evening, the Board of Health will do final reviews with an umbrella development company. That may bring in one approval twenty new incubator, small biotechnologies to this community. This one proposal will require twenty new biotechnology permits, twenty new biotechnology committees that have to be formed, twenty new regular safety inspections, twenty new efforts to keep our town safe. As we, as a community, help to move our town to a new chapter in our history and economic growth, our Burlington Board of Health must be there and must be appropriately staffed. The future and the new Burlington priority. We are a key part of the future of this town. We need an additional professional, and we need it now. We needed it prior to COVID-19. We need it now. And please, I ask you, don't let people with little public health understanding, awareness, and our future in science influence your understanding of where we need to be and where we need to go. Our Board of Health is committed to the future of Burlington and the safety of our town. I'll end with where I started. The Burlington Board of Health touches every member of this community, young and old, every day. Feel free to call us. The phone number of the Burlington Board of Health is there, as well as my cell. I may be a little stiff when I do presentations, but I'm happy to answer any questions one-on-one. Thank you for listening, and I look forward to your questions and comments.
Dr. Weiner, is there a vote of the Board of Health on this article? I'm muted.
The Board of Health voted five zero to support this article.
Thank you. We have a report from Ways and Means Committee.
Yes, we do have a report. The Ways and Means Committee voted nine to five to zero in favor of the request at the position. The the majority of the committee was in favor of the additional position. Five of the members felt that additional analysis needed to be done and that it would be more prudent to take it up at the May Town Meeting when we have a better sense of what the budget looked like considering the COVID-19 pandemic impact on the local receipts, restaurants, hotels, potential issues with state aid and keeping up with the budget. And we also were looking for, some members were looking for additional information about the official duties of the position and what the job description would look like. So that was a nine-five-zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Questions on this article? I see somebody named Cindy. Has her hand?
That's me, Ed.
Ms. Phillips.
Yes, thank you. Oh, I agree. I would like more information about the actual responsibilities and also the salary. It looks like forty thousand until the new budget is decided in May. And you would go ahead with trying to get someone on board as soon as possible, and that he resubmit for some amount, but we don't have an idea what that budget would be for the full year. Can you explain that, Ed? Thank you.
Dr. Weiner, any comment on whether it's for the, what the budget for a full year is?
I'll take a stab at that, and I also have Mr. McSweeney and Susan Luminallo, our Director of Public Health, can also make comments, as well as other members of the Board of Health. Well, first, we're not looking for, we're not looking for an individual who's down the street. We're really looking for, to do a national search. We really want to find somebody who understands not only public health, but also biotechnology. I don't think we will need the forty thousand dollars because it's January and the budget changes in July first, but that's the way we were asked to place it within. It's going to take us a little bit. It's going to take us a while to look through the Commonwealth, New England, the Northeast, and wherever to find somebody that we want. You know, I've always said, we really don't want a schlepper for this job. We're really looking for somebody who can walk into this job and not only do what we need to do to back up Susan Luminallo, who hasn't had a day off in months, and to also work with in succession planning for the Board of Health, but also somebody who can also work with Planning Board and with other of the boards to draw additional people to come to Burlington, additional companies to come to Burlington. I'll ask either Ms. Luminallo or David McSweeney to make further comment.
Yeah, thanks, Ed. Mr. Moderator, this is Dave McSweeney on the Vice Chair of the Board of Health, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So the role is a permanent full-time position. We're looking around the eighty thousand annualized salary. The need, as Ed, Dr. Weiner eloquently stated in his presentation, was needed prior to COVID. The urgency is because of COVID, and that's the reason for trying to get somebody on board prior to the next fiscal season, budget season. So that's, that's why we're pushing this forward now. We have been talking about this in subcommittees and with the Board for, since October. We do have a full job description, which very closely mirrors Susan Luminallo, the Director of Public Health's role, in addition to somebody that has the biotech skill set and knowledge, because there is a lot to know when somebody's, when a company is managing inventory that is chemical and biological in nature. So, so like I said, the urgency is because of COVID, but certainly the need is there prior to COVID and beyond. And we're trying to hire somebody that can touch upon all the functions that the Board of Health do and support those functions.
Thank you, Mr. McSweeney. Did Ms. Luminallo have comments to make?
Yeah, I don't think I have anything additional to add to what was said on that. The position is one grade below my position, and that's where we came with the eighty thousand dollars a year. And like David said, the job description is, mimics my job description and adds in the biotech component to that, knowledge of biotech.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Questions on this article? Ms. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My question is. I was wondering if we could have the town administrator weigh in on this request?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I really don't have much to add. Hope from the video. Dr. Weiner and I agree that we need to take a look at this. I think where we don't agree is on. The quickness of the pace. I would hope that we would be able to. Take a little bit more time to review this request, sort of understand how other communities. That already have a lot of life science are dealing with it. And just sort of take a little bit more time to understand. I think as I noted in my video. The town of Lexington has been unable to hire a public health director for over a year now. When we tried to find part time help to help us out during covid, it was just very difficult to find. So. I don't really think that we're going to lose anything by spending a little bit more time to sort of understand. The position, its need and what what we hope to get out of it. And. That's probably the best that I could do to add to the video that that was sent out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagarino. Additional questions? Mr. Pearson?
Hello? You can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to say that as a member of the Land Use Committee, I just wanted to emphasize the. Degree to which the Board of Health is involved in the development process here in town that. The Board of Health frequently has a critical checkoff. And most of the development issues that I've seen in the last few years. And. I think that what the town administrator just said. Is indicates a good reason why we should allocate this money now and let them begin the hiring process. If the town of Lexington has been hiring for three for a year. And we feel that there's a need for this position, that it makes sense to get started on the hiring process now. Possibly we won't even use any of this money, but. This delay means that a lot of activities. Are going to not get done. And you know, I would rather have forty thousand dollars. Being spent on a nurse who's helping us with the covid and with biotech. Then, you know, transferring money into free cash to stow away like squirrels.
Bill, I think you're muted.
Can't hear the moderator.
Oh, I'm the one who's muted. My mistake. Jen Galinas, you have a comment to make or question? Ms. Galinas, are you there? Well. I guess we have some technical problems there. Go on to Mr. Davison. And could town meeting members introduce themselves or state their name and precinct, please?
Pecoson Precinct two, a member of Ways and Means Committee. I voted against this. Article at Ways and Means the other night, not not on the merits of the actual position. I trust the Board of Health. I trust that that they've looked at this and it's a definite need and I can understand with life sciences coming on. I do think some of the things they listed. They're all very valid and it's all jobs, but we're also going to see a change in some of that with losses of restaurants and losses of activity. So in that sense, I think that they've got a little bit of a period of time where maybe some of the things that are being done will. Will be diminished while others increase. My problem really, my vote against it had little to do though with the merit of the of the request. It had a lot to do with the funding. And we're at a time now where we we're still unsure. As a Ways and Means Committee, we have not yet gotten any report from. From the town administration on on how we're even planning for next year's budget. So with that in mind, and the fact that we just added another emergency administrative position with the schools in October and. September. We're headed into a new budget process with two new administrative positions in the town. That we're going to have to absorb into the budget before we ever look at just normal cost increases. And so I did struggle with that. It's not a forty thousand dollar expenditure. That I have a problem with and it's not forty thousand dollars on this to get help versus putting it in free cash. This is a permanent full time position that's going to go on with. OPEB considerations and. Many other things that we've said we need to be looking at and be very careful about new hires. So. That was my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Davison. We've heard a lot from Ways and Means of why they were against this. I would like to hear from someone in Ways and Means who voted for it. Since it was a nine to five vote. Any volunteers?
Mr. Moderator, I can at least speak to. For on behalf of my position, as I did vote for it. I have a couple. I had a couple of concerns with respect. To the ongoing crisis and the fact that the Board of Health has been. At a hundred percent plus level now straight for nine months and that people have been working. Full time, you know, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty five days a year, you know. Just pretty much every day and I'm just worried about the continuity of the department and making sure that. People aren't burning out and that. They're getting a little bit of rest and I think. That augmenting the position with all the other things that are happening, plus the continuing covid response for at least. Another five to nine months to get through the vaccination period and everyone. On the other side of this, I I just think they're extremely stretched and that. In that, given the given the merits of of the position. I felt that it was better to get started with the process of finding someone because it will take some time. And rather than wait for the analysis. I too do share the concerns of the minority with respect to. The budget and the tightness of it and. Given the given the situation and the fact that we still don't have, you know, the numbers for coming up. I still felt that it was worth supporting.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you.
Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You hear me okay?
Yep.
Steve, our chairman, kind of beat me to most of the things that I was going to say in favor of this. And. This is a difficult decision for for Ways and Means especially. Because we are acutely aware of the fact. That as much as possible, we want to be in a hiring freeze. We want to hold expenses. And we want to protect our free cash. As we get through twenty twenty two and even twenty twenty three. But my view on this, much like Steve's. And, you know, everybody has to make up their own mind here. But I really believe not only the merits of this, but I think the Board of Health is in a mission critical situation for the town. Not just because of public health, but I really think we need to do everything we can. To pull in small and large. Businesses. And one of the the best places we can get them is in the pharma. And the pharmaceutical and biotech areas. And there's a lot of it around us. And they are growing and they're going to go somewhere. Some are coming here, but I think. As much as possible, we need to really cultivate getting more of them. And that's really why I would trigger this now. I think. It's inevitable that we'll do this in the FY twenty two budget somehow. And so I see nothing to be gained by waiting, actually. Not that I don't appreciate what what Mr. Sagarino has said and what Doug has said. We do need to be very careful and I'm not in favor of of much hiring at all. For the foreseeable future. But I think this one is 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 well worth it. And merits our support. Thank you.
Bill, you're muted. Okay, Mr. Fracksek, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. It's Jim Frasek, Precinct six. I'm just curious about, is there a significant backlog of? Business before the Board of Health or? Things that are not getting done that would necessitate a new hire or is it? More around bringing on additional expertise around the biotech. Field. Thank you.
Dr. Weiner and Ms. Luminallo?
Ed, I can take it if you'd like. This is David.
Certainly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. So. There's not necessarily a backlog. But there is a backlog and that's the reason why not just Susan, but her entire staff is working. And this is not an exaggeration. Susan literally works seven days a week and she's working. More than twelve hours a day. She does call me and Dr. Weiner. At nine, ten o'clock at night. We had a conference call, a conversation on New Year's Day. So so the need is there. There's not a backlog because she is working and her staff is working like that. But that that cannot go on forever because obviously nobody can do that. So. And the only comment I would make in addition to that is. If things start falling between the cracks, this is not. Like potentially, and again, I'm not minimizing the other departments and and committees in this town at all because we all do. What we do best for this community. But it's if something falls between the cracks, this is not a delayed subdivision or an approval of a permit. This is affecting the health and safety of our community and that's the reason why we're here. The last thing. The members of the Board of Health wanted to do was bring this because we understand the economic. Situation that we're in. Last thing we wanted to do is bring this in front of town meeting and get this approval, but. We would do it a disservice to the community if we didn't do it. And on top of that, while we were going through that, we we do have a need, as Dr. Weiner was saying. To have biotechnology. We have twenty companies potentially in permits coming in town. That we need to investigate every year. We need the skill set to understand the inventory of the chemical. And biological inventory that they're storing. So there is a need for the future as well. But we don't want things to fall between the cracks. We don't want the safety of the community to be at risk. And I would just make one comment because there was one town meeting member, and sorry, Mr. Moderator, there was one town meeting member that commented about. Potential restaurants closing. I don't know what the total number is, but I think there's only been one restaurant closure, which is being replaced. By a new restaurant coming to town since covid started. And in fact, we've added. I think three or four additional restaurants since covid. And with the mall building out the Sears Roebuck's, there is the Sears. There is another four or five going restaurants going in there. And the nineteen and a half facility, I know there's a permit potentially coming there. So restaurants are growing in this town. They're not decreasing. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, this is Susan. I wondered if I could just add to that.
Go ahead, Susan.
So. We. I like to think that we've we were responding to everything that we need to do at this time. But I will say that covid has put a strain on our department. And it has been going on for quite a while. So what has happened is. The need to pull staff members off of what they would normally do at this time to respond to covid. And the covid requirements are changing as we go along. We have case management requirements that we have to do. We do get some help from the Massachusetts Contact Tracing Team. But a lot of that case management, we have to do on our own because we need to understand what what's happening in our community. So that we can make sure the schools stay open. So we're trying to respond to cases. Based on that as much as we possibly can. So I basically have not only the nurse, but myself, the health agent, the. Associate Health Inspector. All working on case management. As well as Burlington Volunteer Reserve for Volunteers, helping us who have the skill set. To get on and help us with case management. And then there's also the the covid requirements that we've had to respond to in the past year. We're responsible. We've been mandated. To respond to complaints and to make sure that businesses are following all of the covid standards. So we're doing that. And then we're also now we're trying to ramp up our vaccination clinics. We have been approved by the state to give out covid vaccine. And we we did that for first responders. We're planning on doing that for phase two. And we're going to keep on doing it until for as long as the state will give us the vaccine. So. We have a lot of things that we need to do with regards to covid. And quite honestly, I don't see that as going away. Because a lot of this is emergency planning. We are an emergency. Agency. I did not expect, you know, when we've been planning for this for the last ten years. That we were going to have an emergency that lasted for so long. But this is what we're faced with and this is what we we need to do. So. Our emergency planning efforts are going to continue. We have had plans in place to vaccinate the community. And that's what our flu clinics have been for the last ten years is planning for this. So that we can do it. So we want to be able to. The future is going to bring. More requirements, especially with regards to infectious disease. And I think we're not. We're not only going to see it here in Burlington, but on the the local, state and federal level. We are going to have to. Commit more resources to public health. So that we can prevent these types of things from happening in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Luminallo. Ms. Vorganti, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Jay Sri Vorganti. Or Jay Vorganti, as I go. From Precinct one, also a member of Ways and Means Committee. And I voted yes for this. This article. And actually Frank and Steve. Said everything that I wanted to say, but I will just put a couple of things in here from me. I have worked in biotech industry in greater Boston in area all my life. You name a major company like. Genzyme or Biogen or Pfizer. And I have worked all my life. And I do very much understand the importance of getting this position approved. It is for the safety which takes over everything. If we're alive, everything is alive. That's one thing I believe. And the second thing I think we that we need to really. Bring this. These biotech companies into Burlington because Massachusetts is the. Hub of all biotech industry and we need to diversify Burlington industries. To bring accommodate the biotech industries. And I am in support for this position. We need to start the hiring process. It's going to take a time to find the right person. To take on this position. And I think we should all. Look, look on upon this as a necessity for Burlington residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vorganti. Mr. Webb?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct seven. Yes, this certainly sounds like a position. We all should be supporting. My only question is whether. We should add this position now or wait until the May Town Meeting, where we might have more information. where we might have more information. But one question I have in the background of all this is how the town is doing on its financial resources. In September, Paul gave us a detailed estimate showing that, you know, town faced a lot of problems with the COVID situation and the revenue coming in and so on and so forth. It would be nice to hear something, an estimate of where we stand now, a few months later. And I know, of course, there'll be detailed budget information in May at the May Town Meeting. But can Paul or somebody give us an idea of how dire our straits are now? Or can the town easily absorb positions like this? And I'm thinking ahead to the next couple of articles where we have large funding items coming up. So I don't know if we can get some information on how the town is faring, where the estimates in September about on, or are things worse? So that's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Sagorino, do you think you can help us out on this one?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We're heading into a very difficult budget year. Local receipts have been devastated. We're down about $6 million from where we were, mostly on hotel tax, building permits, meals tax, anything related to the economy. We are concerned about what may happen to our state aid as being the next thing. So we are headed into a very difficult year, but I don't think it should be a determining factor as to whether or not you hire this position. So I would ask you to consider the position outside the budget. You know, if it's important and it's needed, then we'll find a way to do it. I wouldn't want the current financial circumstances, which are going to be extremely difficult. But, you know, I certainly wouldn't want you to have to factor that into your decision-making here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. We had a question that came in from Facebook. Someone was concerned that the salary was too low for the description of the position. So I'll just point out that that number was only for half a year, from now until July 1. So I hope that answers your question. Okay, in the chorus room, we have a question.
The presentation, I believe, answered a lot of the questions that we have. As far as the job description is concerned, Susan made it clear that this position is a similar position to what she's been doing right now. So we know what Susan does, so we can kind of like take that out of the equation. The overall presentation and the importance of the safety and the health in the community, because I just don't think that the virus is going to disappear in the next three months. We thought we always had a handle on the flu epidemic, but yet we've been treating flu for many, many years. And I think we're going to be treating viruses again for many, many years, hopefully not at the extent that we are right now. But I'm all in favor of this. It's not a ton of money. We know that there's a lot of positions in town that are a lot higher. I'm trusting that the reason why we're keeping our head above water is because Dr. Weiner is not only acting as a board member, but he's actually a full-time employee now of the Board of Health, serving as the assistant to Susan Luminello. And that's not something that can go on forever. We do need somebody. Again, we're fortunate that we have Dr. Weiner filling in, putting in the hours seven days a week. I've talked to him many times on this. But it needs to be a hiring position for not just today, but also in the future. So I urge you to support this. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. DiTucci. Mr. Sinessi.
Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. Move the question. Did you hear me?
Bill, you're muted.
All right. Adam has moved the question, so we're going to have to deal with that right now. So Amy, if you could get ready for a poll on this. The end room, do we have a vote?
5-0 in favor.
Chorus room?
6-0 in favor.
Thank you. There being 89 in favor and 10 opposed, the motion carries. So that brings us to a vote on the motion. All those in favor of this motion, please vote. Poll's coming out. The end room, do we have a vote?
4 in favor, 1 opposed.
Chorus room?
3 in favor, 3 against.
There being 72 in favor, 24 against, the motion passes. Move on to Article 5. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to replenish the reserve fund, and the article is as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means.
This is part of the, an annual cycle of Ways and Means. The reserve fund is used for unperceived expenses that may occur during the year where we need to act quickly. We transfer $200,000 at the beginning of the fiscal year and transfer in $100,000 when free cash becomes available. Ways and Means supported this 14-0.
Thank you, Mr. Morin. Questions on this article? Mr. Martin.
Dot Martin, Precinct 7. Could the Ways and Means please give us an account of how much of the $200,000 is left in the reserve fund? Thank you.
Mr. Morin, do you have that number? Have we spent any?
To date, we have spent $0. We have $200,000 currently available to us.
Mr. Pearson.
Monty Pearson, Precinct 3. The $100,000 comes from free cash. How much money is there altogether now in free cash?
Mr. Sagorino? Or Mr. D'Nizio? Is there enough to cover $100,000?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Free cash was certified at just under 16.7 million.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Poll's going out. The end room, do we have a vote?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Mr. Moderator, 6-0 in favor.
Thank you. There being 88 in favor, 3 opposed, and 1 abstention, the article passes. Let's move on to Article 6, Transportation Infrastructure Fund. It's been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and the article is as printed in the warrant. The Selectmen supported this 5-0. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means supported this 14-0.
Is there someone who wishes to speak on this? Mr. Sagorino, maybe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These funds are provided to us from the rideshare services. I believe we get 20 cents for every ride that originates here in Burlington. And we're required to use those funds through town meeting appropriation for transportation-related initiatives. And what we're requesting is to use these funds, which is two years' worth of funds for us, by the way, which have built up, not one year. So it is significant compared to where we started. But we want to use these funds to support the town's lift program that we use to replace the B-line.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Questions on this article? Ms. Sickler.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm in Sickler, Precinct 4. Could you please tell me how many rides that represents and over what period?
Mr. Sagorino?
I don't have the exact number in front of me, Mr. Moderator, but it was $55,000 over two years' worth of rides. So I believe it's 20 cents per. So if somebody has a calculator.
Point of information, it's not 20 cents to Burlington. It's 20 cents per ride that gets split 50-50 between the state and Burlington. So it's 10 cents per ride.
That makes the math a little easier, Ms. Sickler.
Ms. Sickler, you're muted.
Thank you. I was confused because I thought some of this money had to do with the MBTA money over the last two or three years, working with the B-line.
Mr. Pearson.
Can someone clarify that for me?
Oh, excuse me. Mr. Sagorino, can you clarify that for Ms. Sickler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is separate. We used to receive state funding towards the B-line as well. A small portion of that was a grant from the MBTA, but this is separate from that.
So this is all left money. All right. Thank you.
Ms. Sickler. Excuse me. Monty Pearson, going down the list here. You're muted, Monty.
What percent, excuse me, Monty Pearson from Precinct 3, what percentage of the operating costs of this program are represented by that $55,000?
Mr. Sagorino, any estimate on that?
Mr. Moderator, I would venture to guess that that would fully fund the program for next year. We don't have a great history just because, right as the program was starting up, the pandemic hit. So we don't have what we would consider great history in terms of, we know how many people have signed up, how many people we transitioned from the B-line. But we don't really have a full picture of how well utilized it will be because there was a long period of time there where people weren't getting in a car with a stranger either. So we don't have an answer to that question.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Mr. Wells Bean.
Andy Wells Bean, Precinct 3. My understanding of this funding stream is that it is intended to support the Open Streets design and similar efforts to support alternative modes of transportation and to work to alleviate the impact of rideshare programs on town resources. It seems counterproductive to therefore use the funds to increase the number of rideshares, rides within town. I believe that the rideshare program is valuable, but I think that this might be a misuse of these particular funds if the intention is to alleviate the impact of rideshare on the town infrastructure. Instead, I feel that these funds would be better put towards developing our complete streets and investing in actual alternative transportation. Can you speak to why these funds are being used for this particular purpose as opposed to something closer to the state authorizing legislation?
Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll defer to John Sanchez or Marge McDonough on this, but we did review the guidance on this, and we believe it's a proper expenditure from this account.
Mr. Sanchez, are you on the line with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
So following up on one of the questions we had earlier that we got into subsidies that... that we used to get from the MBTA. We felt that in order to hopefully manage this new system that we're proposing to the town, rather than rely on the subsidy which is going away, which was about $40,000 a year, this would be a good mechanism to subsidize the new Lyft program that we have in place. So it's almost a one-to-one in which Town Meeting will continue to fund, hopefully, what they used to fund prior to this year for the B-line, and now we'll just move into funding the Lyft program. Again, unfortunately, we don't know how many rides we're going to have. As 2020 was not a real average year for us to actually make a determination. But that was the thought behind it. As you know, in past years, Town Meeting has been very reluctant to actually fund when it came to the B-line transportation, and we look for ways to subsidize it. And this was probably one doable way, as well as one of the ways that is appropriate to use those funds. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Does that satisfy you, Mr. Pete Wells Bean?
I understand the logic. And I've reviewed all the other towns and how they've used their similar funds. I've not been able to find any other examples of towns that have used the money to increase the number of single-passenger vehicles on their roads. All of them were focused, as far as I could see, on pedestrian safety, bicycle access, and other means of alternative transportation that would lessen the impact of the single occupancy vehicles. But it seems like a poor choice.
Thank you. Patricia?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct 2. I guess a couple of questions. One, to fellow Town Meeting member Andy Wells Bean. Thank you for bringing to our attention the fact that this use of the funds might not match the spirit in which the legislation is written. I was not clear on that. And so that actually changes my perception a little bit, given that I am on the Transportation Committee. And one of the things we want to support is a continuation of the pilot program for the rideshare program to address needs that our community has when they lack access to transportation. And so I find myself a little bit conflicted now with that spirit of the legislation being revealed. But a structural question, maybe to Paul Sagorino or John D'Nizio, is the article says that we're going to transfer funds from someplace and to address an issue. And what I'd like is to understand where exactly the funds will be transferred to. Which department will be responsible for the use of the $55,000? Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez or Mr. Sagorino?
If I may, Mr. Moderator?
Certainly.
This transportation fund that was formerly used or managed by the Department of Public Works will be managed by the COA, who is managing the new Lyft program. So as we cancel out the program, they're going to start managing this going forward.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, this is John D'Nizio.
Yes?
Just to add on to that, I think Ms. Brian's question was the mechanism of the transfer. So right now, the money, when it's received, goes into a receipts reserve appropriation account, and we will transfer from that account into the revolving account that the pilot program is being run from.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio.
Mr. Moderator, can I have a follow-up question?
Go ahead, Pat.
My understanding is that the cost right now, given that it's an unusual environment, is not predictive of what we might expect it to be to run the rideshare program. And so in the event that next year, you know, the cost to run the program is still far under the $55,000, will there be room for recommendations for micro-transportation implementations such as blue bike programs and things like that? Will we have the flexibility next year to do that?
That sounds like a Selectmen question. We're getting a little off-topic, whether this is just whether we want to move the money, not whether we like the program. Mr. Sagorino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pat, I think we have a request from the Transportation Committee to come to the Selectmen. So we'll be having COA give a full report on the program, and we'll also hear whatever Transportation Committee would like to offer in terms of suggestions.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christine Warren, Precinct 4. I think I'm having a math problem. If it's $50,000, 10 cents a ride over a 2-year period, that's a half a million rides. And if you then do it, you know, have it go over 104 weeks, and assume people are going 2 ways, it's still 2,600 rides a week. Does that sound right for the people that are running this program? Other than that, or I didn't understand the way that the money is being built up. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I? This is John D'Nizio. Thank you. So the question of how many rides, that's how the math works. I can paste a link on where you can find the ridership info is. But basically, what it is, is if it either ends or begins in Burlington. So any ride that either comes here or leaves here. That's why the number is higher than you would think it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pearson?
Mr. Moderator, Monty Pearson from Precinct 3. I'm uncomfortable with voting in favor of this if the use of the money is contrary to the state program regulations that have us using the money. My understanding is, is that if you use the state money in a way that is contrary to the program regulations, that you end up having an investigation and then having to give the money back. And it seems to me that if this money is supposed to be used for improvements in transportation in the town, alternatives to automobile transportation, and instead is being used for individual automobile rides to support that program, then I think that we're going to end up being investigated and having to give the $55,000 back and lose it altogether. So I hesitate to vote in favor of this, which seems to be outside of the state regulations for how this money gets used.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson.
Mr. Moderator, may I? John D'Nizio?
Certainly, go ahead.
Thank you. In the backup that was included for Town Meeting, there's a memo from Whitney Haskell that is verbatim from the regulation of what you can use it for. And the very last part of sentences and other programs that support alternative modes of transportation, which is why we thought of something like this. And what we have to do is, after this appropriation is made, we have a form that we have to send to the state for them to give us final approval to spend the money. So we wouldn't be able to spend it and get ourselves in any hot water without their approval. So I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. D'Nizio. Mr. Wells Bean, your hand is still up. Do you have another question? Mr. Sacks? Don't move the question.
No, I'm the... What I wanted to say is that it sounds like Andy Wells Bean is correct in his assessment about what the money was meant for by the state. But we were in a situation where we saw the ridership of the bus system declining to the point where it didn't make sense to continue it. And because there is a significant need for older citizens in town to be able to get around, it seemed like a Lyft-type of situation was probably the best thing. And I thought it was a good idea because it's door-to-door, rather than somebody having to walk to a bus stop. And I think the problem of some of the older folks not being able to deal with the app was solved. So I would say that this is a very unusual, specific use of Lyft, which is necessary to take care of our older citizens. And I think that based on that and based on what Mr. D'Nizio said about the state is going to approve this, so we can't get in trouble, I think it's a reasonable use of the money. Because to me, the bottom line is, we, you know, if we're a civilized town, we're going to provide transportation for our senior citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Hanafin? You have the last hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan Hanafin, Precinct 2. I, too, just want to address...
We lost you, Dan. You got a low bandwidth warning on you, Mr. Hanafin. So I'm afraid you're not coming through. So I'm afraid we're going to have to move on. Any further questions? Then we'll put it to a vote. Poll's coming out. The end room, do I have a vote?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Mr. Moderator, 3-3, 3 in favor and 3 against.
Thank you. There being 80 in favor, 12 against, and 2 abstentions. The motion passes. Article 7. Transfer from Free Cash to the Water Stabilization Fund. It's seconded by the Ways and Means Committee, and it is as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means, please.
Ways and Means voted 14 in favor, 0 against.
The Selectmen voted it, supported it 5-0. Mr. Sagorino, anything they wish to say?
Nothing further to add, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Mr. Glance?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Billy Glance, Precinct 1. The amount listed, is that the amount of the incoming funds from local receipts? And that's what our amount is listed as what we're transferring?
Mr. Sagorino? Or Mr. D'Nizio? One of you?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Glance, the amount represents only the amount of water revenues that we collected that was supposed to be earmarked for the MWRA project. Not all the water revenues, but the numbers calculated by Public Works based upon the increases to the water rates necessary to support the MWRA project.
Anything further, Mr. Glance? I guess we're good. Further questions? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. Poll's coming out. The end room, do I have a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, 5-0 in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. 6-0 in favor.
Thank you. There being 93 in favor, 3 opposed, and 1 abstention. The motion passes. Article 8. Phase 2A MWRA Water Connection. The motion is as printed in the warrant. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee. Selectmen supported it 5-0. Ways and Means, please.
14-0.
Mr. Sagorino, anything to add?
I have nothing further to add, Mr. Moderator, but John Sanchez is here as well to take any additional questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the body, then? Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Precinct 7. Could we ask Mr. Sanchez to give us an update on the project, the connection, and where we stand, what this money is actually, how it will be spent over the next 3, 4, 5 years? Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez, please.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. So just to back up a little bit, this is the third time that we're in front of Town Meeting requesting funding for this project. The very first time, 2018, and with those first funds that were appropriated, we completed construction of Phase 1, which is the emerging connection in Adams Street that can provide up to 1 million gallons of water a day. That water main is completed. Permits were obtained through MEPA and the Water Resources Commission, and also through the MWRA to join the authority. And we are currently actually getting water through that main as we're doing work at the Mill Pond Tournament Facility, and we're utilizing that main as we speak. So the Phase 1 has been completed. We came in, in June of 2020, and asked funding for design of this face, construction, as well as the construction of a chemical feed station. The design of the chemical feed station is up to 90% complete. At this point, we will send it to DEP for review and approval, and we hope to be in the ground sometime in the summer of 2020. And this current funding that we're requesting is for the construction of the line between Adams Street to the connection with the MWRA in Lexington. We've decided to divide our Phase 2 into 2 sections. That's why we're calling this Phase 2A, so we can expedite the project, so we can make it a little faster. This Phase 2A, we hope to be in the ground in the summer of this year and complete- in the summer of this year and completed by the end of the next calendar year. And this new section will allow for up to 3.5 million gallons of water a day, which at the end will also allow us for the abandonment of the Byam Brook Turbine Facility. Once we're completed two B, we'll be coming back to town meeting, sorry, once we're complete two A, we'll be coming back to town meeting to request the final funds for, for the final leg of this project, which will be on the Middlesex Turnpike. I hope I didn't go too quick. It's a large project. And the good news about the project is, is twofold. One, we're actually ahead of schedule when it comes to the construction. If you look at the original plan, we were not supposed to be in front of town meeting for probably a year or two to us with this funding that we're doing today. And the other good news is that we received funding from the Mass Works to the tune of $3.5 million that is going to help with the construction of this project that hopefully will set this summer.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Anything further, Mr. Martin?
No, no, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Mr. Glance?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Noah Glance, Precinct 1. First of all, thank you for the backup that was put together. It was very helpful seeing the background and the breakdown of the costs that we were at. I've got two questions. One is, when do we expect to be done? And at that point, will we be, will we be no longer needing these summer watering ban restrictions? And then my other question is about the, the town's debt ratio and what our current debt level.
So, Mr. Moderator, I, I didn't catch all of the part about the water ban sort of like, can you please repeat that question?
Sure. When all of the connections are done, do we expect to no longer need the summer water restrictions, odd even days, and so forth? And if so, what timeframe do we expect that level to be reached?
So unfortunately, we are regulated by DEP and, and the state, so we have to comply with all the rules and regs. And when we have a drought, as we did in 2020, the state will impose drought management to all citizen towns. And since we still utilize the Mill Pond as one of the water sources, we'll have to comply with whatever the drought task force will tell us, as well as all the other towns around us to do. On an average year, though, when, when we don't have a drought, the town will probably keep like the even odd water ban, only because part of the approval process required us to still maintain our water use as we do currently. The state has guidelines, actual regulations on how much water per capita we're supposed to use. And obviously, we've been under that for the last 10 years, so we comply with that. But we will have to maintain some kind of a, I'll say, I don't want to call it water ban, because actually watering every other day is not, it shouldn't be that hard, but we have to probably maintain that. That's not going to be though, until we are done with this phase two A. In, in the meantime, over the next two years, we, we still don't have a large capacity. What we're doing is restoring 1 million gallons of capacity that we lost, which has not really given us everything we need. Hence, we have to do the next phase after this one. So the next two years, although we will ease the outdoor water restrictions, we can't really go to just do even an odd, because we just don't have the capacity, unfortunately. I, I promise, well, I shouldn't say I promise, I'll say I hope that it's going to be best the last couple of years, because now we have this extra pipe. And you'll see it in, in May Town Meeting, we're going to be asking for a good amount of money to purchase water from the MWRA for the first time now that we are members. It's going to be close to half a billion dollars that we're going to put in the budget to purchase that water, which again, is going to make it easier on, on everything on the operation side. But it's not going to eliminate the outdoor water restrictions.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, if I may, the second part of my question was what the debt ratio is before and after this $10 million that is going to be fixed. For now, if I may.
Mr. Sagorino or Mr. Denizio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think as a general rule, the town's debt level is considered moderate on a per capita basis compared to other cities and towns. And the impact, remember now, the MWRA project will be funded through user fees right through the water rates. So because it is a self-supporting debt, it really shouldn't have any adverse impact on our overall debt ratio.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct 2. Many of you may know that I am a strong advocate for water conservation. And, and despite that, I know that the horse is essentially out of the bond on this one. And I want to commend John and, and the whole administration for the process. I happen to participate in public comment during the inter-transfer basin request. And the Water Resource Commission does a really admirable job in terms of assessing whether a community is truly in need. I, I may differ on their outcome, but the process was thorough. And I'd ask John or Paul to kind of make sure that my fellow town meeting members either tonight or in some capacity, that we are all fully aware of the conditions under which we were granted access to the inter-basin transfer, because I think it will be important for us to make sure that our constituents know that there were conditions for that transfer, and mostly those fall in line with my, my major concerns for conservation. I do also view this vote as an opportunity to express that, that I wish that we were able to take the harder road, that we would have taken more time to look forward at the use of this amount of money to create the green infrastructure that would have allowed us to perhaps avoid this kind of connection. But again, thank you for the work you've done. I know that I am a minority voice in this community when it comes to that. But again, thank you. And I will probably be voting no, just to kind of support my argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Seeing no, no further questions? I guess we'll put this to a vote. All going out, Amy? All's on out. The end room. Do I have a vote?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, five zero in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Six zero in favor.
Thank you. There being eighty-nine in favor, five against, the motion passes. Article nine has been withdrawn. Article 10, same thing, has been withdrawn. Article 11 has been postponed. Brings us to article 12. It has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to see if we'll change the name of the Board of Selectmen. And the article is as printed in the warrant. Mr. Sagorino, I assume?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a continuation of what we talked about with the first article. We discussed article two. Article two changed the name within the zoning bylaws. This article that we're voting on right here will change the name from Selectmen to Select Board in the general bylaws. And the next article, article 13, will petition the legislature to change the name in our special act, which relates to town meetings. So there's actually three articles to effectuate this change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Bylaw Review Committee, do you have a, take a position on this?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Scott Martin, Chair of the General Bylaw Review Committee. Both article 12 and article three, 13, we voted five zero zero.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All's on its way out. The end room. Do I have a vote?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Five zero in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
Mr. Moderator, six zero in favor.
Thank you. There being eighty-six in favor, five against, and one, one abstention. The motion passes. Let's move on to article 13. Article 13 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to send a home rule petition to the legislature. Selectmen supported this five zero. Bylaw review? Put the strike five zero. Thank you. Any questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All's going out. The end room. Do I have a vote?
Mr. Moderator, five zero in favor.
Thank you. Chorus room?
All right, Mr. Moderator. Six zero in favor.
Thank you. There being eighty-four in favor, five against, and one abstention, the motion carries. Article 14 has been postponed. Article 15 has been moved and seconded by the Ways and Means Committee to amend General Bylaw Article 14. And the article is as printed in the warrant. Bylaw Review Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Chairman of the Bylaw Review Committee. This article, we voted four, one, zero for this article.
Thank you. Anybody else, any other board have, have any comments on this?
I do. Dave Miller?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, Dave Miller, Precinct 4, Member of the Bylaw Review Committee. I'm the one who instigated this proposed bylaw. Like, at least, at least for the past year, we've been having trash and recycling trucks come down our street very, very early, sometimes certainly at least 20 minutes before seven. And recently, even, they came down, they come down early, they beeping their horn at some turkeys on there at quarter or seven or thereabouts. And finally, I guess it just pushed me over the edge, pushed my wife over the edge and says, can't you do something about it around the Bylaw Review Committee? So I took a look. We don't have, didn't have any bylaws regulating when pickup can occur. And so I decided that we needed to put one, add a bylaw to our general bylaws, so that contracts, any future contract cannot specify earlier than 7:00 AM pickup, even though the current contract does specify, you know, early as seven. And I know they're not adhering to it all the time. But I think we needed in a public place to ensure that future contracts can't be negotiated that have earliest start times. I looked at what our neighboring towns do in all our three neighboring towns, Billerica, Bedford, and Lexington, all have bylaws regulating, regulating when pickups can occur. And the thing that sort of cements it for me is Bedford and Lexington actually allow pickup at 6:00 AM. And I certainly don't want Berlin to have a negotiated contract that allows 6:00 AM pickups. I don't know how many everybody else feel, certainly how I feel. And for the environment of our town, I think seven o'clock is perfectly fine. So that's, that was the impetus for this bylaw. I think it's pretty simple. I don't think it puts any tough restrictions on anybody in the administration, GPW, et cetera. So that's, that's my opinion. And it's, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. I believe we have an amendment to this. I've lost the text. Mr. Illo, you have an amendment on this article?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me? Okay, great. Yeah. At first, thanks to Dave Miller for creating all these quality-of-life bylaws I think are pretty helpful. I had just a few concerns with it as worded. So in particular, it's not clear who can declare the emergency for how long. And by having the phrase that this, it doesn't limit the, the authority of Select Board, it also doesn't prevent them from creating contract that would have an earlier time. So what I was proposing was an amendment to Section 4.6.3 in particular. And I'll, is, is this something that you can project, Mr. Moderator, or should I read it, or?
Please read it.
Okay. So I'll read it here. So the amendment requests that we replace 4.6.3 with the following text. Applicability, this bylaw applies to all zoning districts. Each of the following shall have the authority to suspend application of this bylaw during an emergency condition for a period not to exceed 30 days in any single instance, colon, Select Board, Town Administrator, Director of Public Health, Director of Public Works, end quote. So again, the intent is to make it very clear who can declare the emergency for a limited for a limited time. And by wording it this way, it prevents any future contracts from violating the goal of the bylaw. So I think this just sort of helps clarify the bylaw to be more accurately represent the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ilor. Okay, so we now have an amendment on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. So discussion on the amendment, not on the main article, but on the amendment, please. Mr. Boyven? Whoops, your hand disappeared. Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct Four. Whether you look at the amended or the original article, I want to speak to applicability. So the first question I have is, as written, this bylaw applies to all zoning districts. And I'm wondering if in some, say, an IG area, possibly a business general area, if in fact, it's a penalty, and maybe even a detriment to not pick up earlier, for example. I'm assuming that, you know, the real issue here is residential disruption. And I'm just wondering, when we say this applies to all zoning districts universally, if that's actually a good idea? And different, but in that same four point six point three, it also says at the end, nothing in this bylaw shall limit the authority of the Select Board to set all limit pickup hours. Therefore, the Select Board can actually override this at will if they were asked to do so in the context of a contract. Am I correct?
That's the purpose of the amendment.
So it eliminates the Select Board's ability to set a limit pickup hours?
It limits it to emergency conditions and limits it to thirty days.
Okay, all right. So let's set that aside for a second. So the issue of applying to all zoning districts, has this had a public hearing?
Don't understand the question.
Has there been public discussion on this bylaw, or is this it?
Yes.
Yes, there has been public discussion?
Yes.
And in the public discussion, did the issue of applying to all zoning districts universally ever come up?
No.
All right, well.
In fact, in fact, I've read some postings on Nextdoor where people have been complaining that even though they're in a residential area, they're near industrial area, and people come to empty their, some companies come at five o'clock in the morning to dump their thing. So this is only curbside pickup. So I think it has to apply to all zoning districts.
I see. So for example, if there's, let's just, I can't think of a great example, so bear with me. Let's suppose one of the automobile dealerships has a trash pickup of some kind, or a material pickup in their lot, interior to their property. This would not apply to that.
It's right.
Okay. Okay, all right. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Any further questions on the amendment? Not the main article, but the amendment. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, I'm not sure whether this applies to the amendment or not because I can't read it. But I just went through this, I live behind crossroads, and in the process of going through a site plan, I made the planning board and the owner of that shopping center aware of how noisy it is at three, four, five in the morning when trucks come in and bang the dumpsters, either bang them on the ground or bang them so the cover slam is to empty them. I do know that the truck drivers like to get there early to beat the traffic so they're not stuck in traffic. But in warmer months when windows are open, my neighbors and I hear it quite loudly because the back of the shopping center is a hard wall, and the sound echoes off that up the hill into our bedrooms. And I am opposed to allowing at least that particular commercial operation to collect their dumpsters prior to seven AM. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons?
Thank you. I'm not entirely sure, but I'm hoping someone can elucidate this. But I believe this is relevant both to Mr. Kelly's question and to the specificity of zoning, and perhaps to the entire substance of the proposal. If we look at the general bylaws, one dot thirty-three dot two dot one, no person shall operate a motor vehicle for purpose of emptying, moving, placing, replacing, or removing commercial solid waste containers between the hours of nine PM and seven AM, except with approval of the Board of Selectmen. So that seems to preclude at least some of the activity already, also by a three hundred dollar fine. The same, it seems to overlap substantially, if not entirely, with what we're talking about here. Is there someone who can, who has reviewed this that can help me with the distinction between that regulation and the proposal?
Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I looked at that article that you referred to, and that came across to me as the regulating businesses that don't do curbside pickup. And this encompasses not just trash and recycling, the yard waste, you know, it includes anything that's going to get picked up at curbside. I think going forward, and one of the things that's on my back burner is to look at seeing if we can get some sort of overall noise regulation in town. I know other towns have noise regulations a little more complicated, but I'm just sort of tackling one by one as we find something that violates or is very disturbing. And that's all this is intended to do. I don't think it's very complex. And I don't think it overlaps or oversteps anything else, but that's my view.
All right, let's focus on what the issue is right now. The amendment. Any comments specific to the amendment? Let's either get it up or down so we can discuss the main motion. Mr. Park Parsons, your hand is still up. I hope, you just haven't put it down yet. Thank you. All in favor of the amendment? So with this vote on the amendment? All coming out? The end room, do I have a vote?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Five zero in favor of the amendment.
Thank you. Chorus Room?
Zero in favor, six against.
Okay. There being sixty-eight in favor and eighteen against, the amendment passes, brings us to a discussion of the main motion. Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct One. First of all, the discussion about dumpsters and things in the parking lots, apparently it's not part of this article. This seems to be addressing only curbside pickup. So my comment there is, this seems to be a contractual violation. The contract says seven o'clock, and they're coming fifteen minutes early. The question perhaps is for Mr. Sanchez, how is a violation of the contract dealt with? Is there a mechanism for communicating that to the company, penalizing the company in some fashion? I don't see the need to have a new bylaw change if, you know, this can just be dealt with, this type of thing, under the contract.
Mr. Sanchez, you still with us?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. The contract establishes different penalties, some monetary, depending on the violation that might have happened. We worked with the contractor, particularly during the pandemic, as far as violations, due to the large increase in volume that the contractor has seen for people staying home. And a lot of it has to do with either employees on the quarantine or employees who are home because they have COVID, and they have new employees coming into the routes that never done before. So there's been a lot of that going on this year. So we've been working through the season, you know, just to make sure the trash gets picked up. The volumes are high when they go to Wilbur Brader and Covanta to drop off the loads as well. So in this particular case, we went back and forth a couple of times on how to solve it. And they actually solved this by not allowing the employees to actually punch in automatically in the clock until fifteen minutes later. So they used to allow the employees to punch in at six AM. Now, now if the employee goes in at six AM, they can't even punch the clock, they have to wait until six fifteen. And by moving the clock fifteen minutes, then the clock moves forward, they're working things for us. So it's going to take them a while to actually get here to Burlington. I thought it was an easy solution, a good solution, which takes care of this particular problem and during these times as well. So, and that's how we actually dealt with this particular issue.
That sounds like a good answer to me in terms of not needing to have this as another bylaw. It was handled brilliantly under the contractual agreement. I like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyven. Any further questions on this? Mr. Monaco? Frank, you're muted.
How about now?
Here we go.
There we go. Thank you. I'm still Frank Monaco from Precinct Four.
Good.
So I'm a little bit confused. I understand what Mr. Miller is up to. And I think everybody wholeheartedly agrees, we don't want unnecessarily that kind of noise driving by any residence, home or neighborhood at six o'clock in the morning. But correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody can come into the town and perform a service like this on a regular basis without a contract. And those contracts go through the Board of Selectmen, and I would assume with Public Works input. So isn't it the case, wherever there's a problem, it's a contract violation, and therefore reportable and enforceable through the approving authority, police and Public Works? So isn't that the remedy that already exists? I don't know who wants to take that, but I just think, you know, as to Mr. Boyven's point, I think we have a remedy for this kind of a problem. It's actually perfect. It's a contract violation. They lose their business.
May I respond to that, Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
Yes, the whole point is, yes, the current contract specifies seven AM. What if somebody in the future negotiates one with six thirty, six o'clock? Like I said, Bedford and Lexington have bylaws that allow, that specify six AM, so they can negotiate contracts to have trash pickup start at six AM. So I don't want to rely on a contract. I think that's a very bad idea. We need to have a bylaw in place that specifically says the town of Burlington does not want this type of activity to start before seven AM, and not to rely on the whims of some contract negotiation.
You're muted, Frank.
Follow-up?
Go ahead.
All right, Frank Monaco, Precinct Four again. So really, the issue here is with the contracting, you know, our contracting authority, our own, you know, our own administration. I can't imagine them issuing a contract for hours that are that early or outside the norm unless they had a really good reason. I just, you know, I'm struggling with what we're protecting ourselves against, Selectmen that are crazy?
Well, Bedford and Lexington have a nearby law that can start at six AM.
Right, but did they ever do that contract?
I don't know. But why not have a bylaw that just, you know, it's very simple. Why not just have a bylaw that says they can't stop before seven AM? Then there's no questions, there's no confusion, no ambiguity.
Okay.
The contract has to obey the bylaw.
Okay.
There's nothing complicated here.
I didn't say it was complicated. I do understand, and I appreciate the answer. So thank you.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Scott Martin, Chair of the Bylaw Review Committee. Just during our discussions and in our meetings, public hearings, the example that came up that brought us to the realization that we probably should have something like this in our bylaws is when the contractor actually negotiates with several towns in one area, and the contract is shared amongst several towns, it becomes difficult for each town to then specify, they can start at six thirty in Lexington, six in Bedford, seven in Burlington, and nine in Billrica. And if they don't catch that, those individual pieces of the contract for each of the towns in the contract, then you have Burlington could possibly miss out and be able to be picked up at six o'clock with the same as Bedford. So that's why we felt in the majority that this bylaw should be supported in our own bylaws. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Mr. Pearson?
Monty Pearson, Precinct Three. I just think that it would be a good idea to have a bylaw that sets this standard. And there's no need to worry about future contracts in the Board of Select, the Select Board would be able to do its negotiations and say, we absolutely can't negotiate about what time the contract starts. And it's seven o'clock here, that's in the bylaws. And so it's not something that we can negotiate with you about. And I think it makes sense to have something in the bylaws that gives the, you know, some strength to the negotiating party. We don't have to trade that off for something else. It's in the bylaws, and so it can't be done.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Mr. Kelly?
To me, the value of the bylaw-
To me, the value of the bylaw is to protect against an oversight in the contract language if for some reason that escapes the language of the contract, the bylaw covers that potential error. The other issue that was raised about trucks going to multiple towns, because each town is responsible for its tonnage, I do believe a truck cannot pick up in more than one town.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Doob? Ed, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thought I had unmuted. Ed Doobie, Precinct 2. I'm not sure when the time clock solution that Mr. Sanchez brought up was put into effect, but as early as two, as recently as two weeks ago, they came early on Locust Street. Okay, and that's been going on for a long time. So I mean, if we have, you know, if we're working with the company to try and resolve the issues, that's great. But if we're not resolving the issues, I do find that problematic. I just want to throw that out there. As recently as two weeks ago, they were still coming early. So that's it.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Warfield? Okay, let's send out a poll. Let's vote. Grand Room, do I have a vote?
Mr. Moderator, yes. 3-2 in favor.
Thank you. Corrus Room?
6-0 in favor, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. There being 67 in favor, 23 against, and one abstention, the motion passes. Article 16?
Motion to adjourn.
Somebody woke up. Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, let's just raise hands visually. Anybody opposed?
Raise your hands.
There we go. We're done. Thank you much.
Thanks, everybody.